We're here to stay.
Y'all here to stay? Y'all say I never see. We don't start this meeting this morning a little different than I should have been thinking of it like we recognize this morning. And the first thing they'd like to recognize is Dr. Emma Jean Nixon.
Let them away. Y'all gonna make them walk on their feet.
We have our duty. We accept her.
Wow, that's not good. But I'm fine.
She's a tough old lady.
Uh, we got a plaque for Dr. Nixon. Nixon here today and she served thirty-two years of dedicated service to the Ozark Dale County Library. And that's unheard of. And we appreciate all the service you've given. Says in acknowledgement of your commitment to serving others in your community, we present Dr. Emma Jean Nixon with a certificate of appreciation for thirty-two years of dedicated service to the Ozark Dale County Library. Certified with honor and appreciation this twenty-fourth day of October two thousand twenty-three.
Wow. Another one of those wow moments. What can I say? But thank you, thank you, thank you, members of the Dale County Commission. Thank you, thank you, thank you for appointing me eight times, eight four-year terms to a place that is so dear to my heart, the Ozark Dale County Library. I served eight of those thirty-two years back in the eighties, from eighty-one to eighty-nine, I believe it was. And then after I retired from education work across the wire grass, right here in the place that I love so deeply, right here in the Ozark Dale County Community, I was appointed again in nineteen ninety-nine, and again in oh-three, and eleven, and fifteen, and nineteen. And you guys, I just can't thank you enough. You don't know, and I don't even have words to say adequately to express my appreciation to you for that appointment. I worked in education thirty-seven years, I believe it was. And then after my retirement, to be able to serve this many years in my retirement is just absolutely amazing. I've always had, well, I had the best parents in the world and I had the best husband in the world and they were always supporting me. They were community service people. And then to have the opportunity to work with so many wonderful staff members, people who do the daily work of the library, and to work with so many wonderful board members all of those years. All of that has just been wonderful. And I will treasure these thirty-two years more than you can even imagine. I just have enjoyed it so much. And then secondly, in addition to thanking you for the appointments, I want to thank you for your very generous allocation that you have made every single year. And as the treasurer of that board for these past twenty-four years, you know, we've had our high moments and low moments like most organizations do. And we've been through those times. Will we be able to make the payroll and buy this and have these programs and do this? But I always knew, I always knew in my heart of hearts that those people serving on the Dale County Commission were going to be dependable supporters. And you have them.
Forty-seven years.
And we thank you. We thank you for that because we understand financial difficulties for every board in every agency. But thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving me one of the great opportunities to serve and work with so many wonderful people. And especially thank you for your annual allocation to the library. Thank you all so very much. God bless all of you as you continue to serve. A little statement comes to mind right now that comes from Thomas Jefferson. He said, he was a ad, uh, just a dedicated worker in so many areas, our Thomas Jefferson, as you know. But he said very simply and yet profoundly, I think, it's wonderful what we, what may be done if we're always doing. It's wonderful what may be done if we are always doing. So let us all be doing to make our beloved Ozark Dale County commi- uh, community a better place.
Our next presentation is the, um, Ozark Dale County Library was Kieroskic. We got you here. We gonna do all this up front. Thank you so much. We've got this presentation for you.
Nobody gonna say cheese or nothing? Y'all gotta smile. Come on now. Just, just look straight ahead and we'll all get our shot.
Alright, everybody got it?
Sure.
Now, the Auburn Extension Week.
How many? There's a whole crew here. I got my squad. Excuse me?
Just you right now. We'll bring the squad up later. We got a presentation to the Auburn, this Auburn Extension Week proclamation. And I'm just gonna read the little part of it. It's now therefore let it be resolved that the Dale County Commission is hereby declaring October twenty-two to twenty-eight two thousand twenty-three, twenty-three, is the Alabama Extension Week in Dale County, Alabama. And encourage all of your, all of our residents to discover how Alabama Extension buys solutions for every day of life. Alright.
You have to smile. There you go. Too serious. Alright, squad. You may as well just stay up there.
Alright. And this is a presentation of our appropriated funds of Alabama Department of Extension Service.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we got one more presentation to make. Kelly gets her picture. We got one more announcement to make for Auburn Extension Service. Melissa's birthday is today. Y'all need to sit around a happy birthday.
Are y'all ready? We're gonna sing our happy birthday. Ready? Yes, we are.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Melissa. Happy birthday to you.
Thank y'all so much. Can I, can I make an announcement?
Yeah, we're gonna sit down.
We're done with the front.
I will give the check to Landy. Does this work? Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa. I'm from Alabama Extension. I'm the county coordinator and it is Alabama Extension Week. So we do wanna thank our commissioners. We are all very lucky, especially those of you who told me you're new to attending government meetings. We're so glad that you're here and I hope you realize your importance. And our commissioners, they listen and we're very lucky to have that in Dale County. On behalf of Alabama Extension Week though, we have filled our office lobby today with donuts and we would love for all of you to come join us because we do not know what we would do without all of you. Support us and also it's my birthday, so you better show up. Grab a donut, come and talk to us, get to know us a little bit of what we do. And commissioners, all of you, thank you so much for having an open door and for supporting us like you. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Alright, I'll tell you the reason why this is important. We're gonna do a little job work session. And firstly, without a work session, we got a public county here. Daniel East.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the County Commission. My name's Daniel East. When my name is pronounced, it's like the weatherman says every other morning, winds due east. And so that's a part of my problem that nobody is able to solve. I live at nineteen sixty-five County Road five sixty-three. It's just outside of New County South of Dade. And the nature of my problem is that, um, there's a fellow that lives back behind me to the, to my southwest. So he's, he's doing illegal mining. And because of the way the most prevailing winds blow, it comes right to my house. It smells syrup. I know for a fact that mining plastic puts out noxious fumes, poisonous fumes. This has been going on for five or six years. Years ago, I complained. The code enforcement officer told me to send him pictures. I sent pictures and pictures and pictures and pictures. Since growing pine trees, we're about twenty, thirty feet tall now. So I can't see the red plants. I can barely see the smoke, but I can sure not smell it. Okay? Now, back then, I'm not trying to mislead us, but, uh, there was a certain amount of lack of cooperation between the sheriff's office and code enforcement. And I support that because I feel like code enforcement, I mean, sheriff's office deputies should get a much, much better pay than what they get. But not really as a newspaper, so. Years ago, some twenty, thirty years ago, like thirty-five years ago, I was in Tallahassee. I worked for Leon County, for the county commissioners as environmental engineer. And a good part of what I had to do was code enforcement. And we were told if you get into a situation that you can't handle, if you get into especially confrontational people, or people that you feel are gonna be dangerous, we just walk away, come on back, report to my supervisor and we'll go back there with the deputy, with the armed deputy and we'll get this thing fired out. So I noticed there's a lot of new people here. And since I've turned in my request to speak, I've got several phone calls. I'm kinda confident, I'm pretty confident that someone's gonna get, get done about it. Previous code enforcement officer went as far as to contact A-DAM. And in my job right now, I deal with A-DAM a lot, I can tell you. It didn't surprise me what their response was. Their response was, sounds like a level problem, you deal with it. And the way it got dealt with was, I got stripped under the rug. So I'm hoping for a better outcome this time. Thank you very much.
Mr. East? We, um, I understand that I really knew the problem, just taking care of this problem as we speak and whether discussing it, we don't wanna bring it up in the public media. But it is being recognized as a problem, it's being a general problem and it could be an outcome here.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's reason for my confidence.
Appreciate it. Alright. I want to run a phone call without a form and ask the commissioner, give you my introduction and please present yourself.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
I'd like to ask now for approval of the agenda and our last commissioning amendments and the memorandum of orders. Is that a motion?
Second motion.
We got a second little motion. All of the papers state to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first item on the agenda is a personnel request with Sheriff's Department for a full-time correction officer. And there's two full-time correction officers. I'm gonna have the motion to fill those positions.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there's three full-time correction officers. One is, um, just replacing a previous employee. Two are for new positions that the commission opened up during this budget. This is being funded by our reimbursement from the state that's new. It was from Act two thousand and twenty-one dash two forty-nine where we are being reimbursed twenty-eight dollars a day for parolees and people that are on probation. They're really state inmates and they have to spend time in our jail. And what the jail does for us is they gather this information and we submit it to the state for reimbursement. And that's gonna be around eighty thousand dollars to us. So with that, um, we all funded two new positions, two additional positions in the new budget.
We'll go back and redo that motion for three, but that, that letter is talking about pushing the dividend notes up to ACCA got a bill passed for that to reimburse us for before we do this. Alright, we go back to the motions of the three. You got a motion?
My motion is for a second.
There's a motion, a second. All of the papers state to say aye. We got a travel request. And Mr. Christian Walton, you want to bring the inspection and pressure primary movement? Do you have any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, there's also an additional, um, traveler test for, um, a different corner of David Groves. If mileage expense was extra and left off of his original, the original, so, um, we are putting that on.
Any opposed? A motion second. All of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. And our EMS tag fee distribution. Do you have anything to add to that?
Um, I don't want the, um, the totals for the, um, year that I was gonna present to you. Between the appropriations and yearly appropriations, um, this kind of distribution and the fire fees, the EMS, um, will save over a hundred and twenty thousand. That's what it's for, you know, for the commission and here's to, um, the emergency.
Do we have anything that figures on like year by year? What, what is our EMS type of, is it increase and decrease?
It's roughly about the same. Um, the, um, EMS has is almost forty-seven thousand this year, this past fiscal year. In addition to that, um, we are still racking up the CDBG, um, credit grant that was four hundred thousand for the, um, EMS.
Alright, any more questions? Alright, any motion on the tag fee distribution?
My motion is for a second.
A motion is second. All of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is a budget amendment for one seventeen. This is Roden Bridge and the end like that. Can you explain what's going on there?
Yes, this will be effective, um, September thirtieth, twenty-three. Um, what happened was is that, um, they did more work under the, what could be considered triple R and paid under the one seventeen. And when, um, I saw this, I got with the engineer, we discussed, we do want a budget amendment, um, for this so that it can be paid and back to, um, in fiscal year twenty-three. We do have the funds. It just, it is more advantageous to pay for these expenses out of the more restrictive one seventeen instead of the gas fund, the one-eleven. It's originally paid for under the one-eleven and then we do a transfer, um, to, um, put it, um, back from the one seventeen to the, um, the gas and the one-eleven.
Any more questions on that? Any motion?
No.
Motion? A motion, all of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is a postage machine lease agreement. And that's for this office here, our member commission office.
It's for the building.
Yeah.
So Solidways, Roden Bridge, the commission office, we would share it. About three years ago, um, I realized that we did have a postage machine for the county. So, um, I got one and it's at the courthouse. And so revenue, um, for registrars and everyone uses that. Um, it's a lot more efficient to have a postage machine. It's a little less for postage. You do have to pay to lease the machine. But before we were having to cut checks and then department heads were having to go to the post office to buy, um, postage. And then if you had a box, you would have to go down there and prepay and then get reimbursed, um, for that expense. So it's a lot more efficient to have a postage machine. But now we're asking it for three years. If we could have one for this system. Because when, um, Solidways runs postage, it is a lot. And they have to now carry it over to the courthouse and same for, um, in the commission office. So we're asking for a postage machine for this building.
Was there any kind of savings or is it more than a few things?
Um, we did through a postage machine. Um, we did five censals of each stamp. And also it's, I would say savings because it is, the postage is on the machine, not just in rolls, rolls of stamps just, you know, out, um, you know, throughout the county. And I'm sorry, I, I lose my voice right now. But, but it is, it's, it is more efficient.
How much is that, Lisa?
It is, um, three thousand one eighty-four for a year.
Any more questions?
And I just wanna say, not only do we get a discount on the postage, but every time the postage, um, changes, you know, the machine automatically updates it. Um, we now can put postage on, uh, with this system, we're gonna be able to put postage on the machines through the computer. So when revenue, um, is running low, they've got a lot of postage, um, you know, we can just sit there and go to the computer and put postage on the machine for this.
Any more questions? No, the proof, please?
Second.
A motion is second. All of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? Alright, our next item on the agenda is the holiday schedule. I know that's a lot of work put into this schedule. And it balances out, each ten-hour employee's got a hundred and twenty hours of time. And each eight-hour employee's got a hundred and twenty hours of time with a floating holiday. Any more questions on that?
Yes, so on this, we usually give a hundred and ten hours of holiday. That's the average. This year, I'm asking for a hundred and twenty hours of holiday unless you wanna deduct, um, one of the holidays. What happened, it's just, it's just how the holidays fall. Um, whether it's in, we look at it per calendar year. So New Year's can be one calendar year or the other. Um, the only things that we have that are not already federal holidays is the day after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve. So those are the two that I'm asking to be a county holiday that is not already a federal holiday. There are a few of the state holidays that we do not follow. We have not followed those in a few years.
Any questions on that? Any motion to approve that?
No, second.
We got a motion second. All of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, our next item is the Auburn Extension Funding Agreement with Ozark Dale County E nine one one Board. And, um, this agreement is set to expire. Our original agreement set to expire October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Additional time is needed to complete the final administrative requirements set forth in the agreement. And the parties, the parties agreed to extend the agreement to allow time to complete the administrative requirement. It is agreed, it is agreed between the parties you two to extend the agreement to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
There's no additional funding. It is strictly to extend the deadline so that, um, E nine one one can get the invoices from the vendors and then pay, um, in order for us to reimburse them with the arrears you all had already agreed to.
Alright, any motion to approve the agreement? A motion second. All of the papers state to say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Alright. Any report, who's that? Mr. Willie, you got anything?
It's looking nice. We should get some money out of this next week. Uh, beginning to the middle of the month. Fire danger is still very high. Uh, there's two dogs and there's a rat. That's it.
Are you hearing, you got anything?
I think we're well, we got a lot of good work to do. The hunger nation's working hard. And every big step, you know, cleaning up some places. I believe there's some arctic storm where the worst. I see about a quarter day. I think four sites have already been completed. And do a lot of basic paperwork out there, so.
Yeah, you really come.
Yes.
Alright, yeah, it's making progress. Alright, Mr. Willie, you got anything?
I think so. They were, um, this is, this is too early. Uh, it's probably back to this month.
Sure, but you have nothing.
I just wanna say we have done the, um, the end of our, the end of the preparation. And we're, uh, you know, the commission will deliver that. Um, I am working towards the F I twenty-three. And with that, I will, we have a free commission for a lot.
I know you're not more rushed than I am. You didn't say anybody, you don't, well, for me, I'm. I know you're not going to rush that long, you've been saving money, but it's not, well, for the, uh,
Uh, the, that's a project that the appropriate incident on last meeting looks to be ready for, and, um, Alex, uh, thank you for, for, again.
Alright, as long as we'll have our next meeting on Tuesday, number fourteen, our fifth, ninth, and eleventh, and morning, I'll let you send the motion to them.